I am showing a thumbs up from our Facebook runner there. So I want to welcome everyone. We'll call this meeting to order. It's a welcome to the work session for the recess meeting of March the 17th of 2020. And we're going to have a briefing this morning, and I'm going to read off a little prepared statement just because I want to say everything I need to say without leaving anything out. So I think this is an important work session for us because the city and county leadership are facing issues that none of us have ever been a part of. In a moment, you're going to hear from Kristin Campanella, who has very kindly included us in her busy schedule to brief us on the FEMA responses, the Emergency Management Association responses and recommendations for the next week or so, based on the current data that we have access to. But as a city, we want to be diligent in assessing the threats, and we want to be prudent, and we want to be cautious in our response. And with that in mind, we've instituted some protocols that include evaluating all the city's activities, including events. The first event that's impacted by this protocol is the Pride Parade. It was scheduled for the 21st, and they have, the Pride Board met last night, I believe it was, yeah, I think that's correct, met last night, and have now tentatively reset it for September the 12th. So they have postponed it until then. The next event after that is the blue and white picnic, which we will also evaluate. It doesn't show up, it's not on the schedule until April, and so we'll be working with the organizers of that event to determine how we're going to proceed with them as time goes on. Our police department has instituted some internal protocols in response, and our department heads have been challenged to manage their budgets and their personnel with the impact of the virus in mind. The Park and Recreation Department is looking at the possibility of either closing the Travis Outlaw Center or managing the number of people who are there at any given time with the idea of the social distancing that's being recommended to us. I know the Mississippi soccer activities have been canceled until the 1st of April, and there's a baseball tournament that's scheduled for next weekend, which we will be evaluating on Monday with the organizer of that. Our electric department is evaluating their interaction with the public, and while kiosks are part of our regular operations, they are also encouraging those who want to need or pay in person to use the drive-up window, so you can certainly walk up to a drive-up window. The Greater Starwell Development Partnership has issued a statement that they will consider the circumstances for their events as the spring events draw closer, and we will participate with them in that decision-making process and allow them to make those decisions themselves unless we feel the need to intervene based on facts that are constantly evolving. So with those measures as a start, we will hear from Ms. Campanella. Where did she go? There she is. And let us know what's going on today, if you would please.
Um.
Come right on up. We got a camera here, so if you want, in fact, if you want to go over there, we can point it at you.
I'm standing.
Because I think we have a good number of folks who are probably going to pay attention to this since it was on the front page this morning, and I think we have some visitors here who likewise will be interested.
Yeah, do I have representatives from the hospital here too?
Wonderful, and we appreciate that.
And they're going to speak on the medical side of things?
Okay.
If you want them to come on now?
Yeah, that'd be great. Everybody can come sit around so we all get socially distanced here. Get our spacing out.
Hold your hand up.
Mr. Latimer, you're welcome to come down here if you want.
Yeah, I'll bring up the space.
Chrissy, give us a little slide.
Okay.
Savannah Brown is our quality manager for OCA, and then Mr. Jackson is our CEO.
Wonderful. Thank you all for taking the time to be here, because I know your schedule is especially busy right now, so we appreciate it greatly.
So first, I just want to thank y'all for letting me come today. I appreciate you inviting me to come. So as you know, I'm the Emergency Management Director for the county. Part of my role is coordinating response agencies during disasters or emergencies, and so with part of that is to serve as a liaison for state resources that we may have to bring in in the event that all of our capabilities have been exhausted. So with that, we have a comprehensive emergency management plan, and within that plan, it lists all the different types of disasters and emergencies that we can have, and then it also lays out everybody's role if we are impacted with those disasters. So part of that plan, we have an emergency support function, E S L, we call it Number Eight, which is the Public Health and Medical Services Act. Within that, our state coordinating officer, of course, is the Mississippi Department of Health. Our local primary supporting agency is O C H. So we've been working with everybody real close to try to get an idea of what everybody's plans are, what their procedures will be when we are impacted with this virus. So we met on March the 3rd with all of these supporting agencies, and we all got in the same room and discussed what everybody's plans were going to be. Our goal in that meeting was to start some public education outreach, go out to the communities, the schools, the businesses, and start, you know, preaching the prevention measures. But we're kind of almost past that now. We still want to, you know, talk about prevention and how everybody can do that, but we're almost on the edge of a response mode at this point. So right now, our focus, I believe it's going to be on just preventing the virus and then what my department can do about getting the resources that anybody may need, whether that's the healthcare facilities or any of our response agencies, law enforcement, our fire department, and of course, our government offices. With that, of course, we always want to stress to the residences, I know everybody's been reading, keeping your hands clean, keeping them off your face. If you're sick, stay home. But with us, we want to try to stress on the business side, too. We've seen a lot of posts from different businesses in town, restaurants, you know, eat local, and you know, we know that's very important to our community. So stressing keeping everything sanitized, any surfaces that the public's going to touch, routinely cleaning those. Post visual reminders within their facilities. We all know to wash our hands, but sometimes seeing those handouts in the bathrooms, just how to wash your hands. And I brought some of those, and I can, these are all on the CDC's websites, but just having, you know, something in front of the mirror in the bathroom, you know, when they come into the restaurant, just, it kind of keeps everybody having that visual reminder of keeping yourself clean and kind of stop the germs. Currently, our emergency operation status is at a level four. That is the lowest. We start from four to one, so that is the lowest, but we have created a virtual situation room, and with that, we have representatives from every response agency in the county that's going to post what they're doing now, if they get anything. This will not be a public or media site. This is just for our coordination to collaborate with everybody in our county to see what everybody's doing or any unmet needs that anybody may have. And then with that information, then if we need to push anything out to the public or media, you know, we'll do that at that time. I don't know if y'all seen yesterday with the briefing that they had in Jackson, our state cohort, the Mississippi Emergency Management Agency, went to a level one, which is the high status, and that, they have not been to that status since Hurricane Katrina. So that says a lot on the state side. They're ready to provide those resources if we need them. And what that, so every desk at the state E O C is manned, so, you know, any requests that we have from county E M As that go to them, you know, they're ready on go waiting to fulfill those. Within our operations, and we also have 911, we kind of queried or changed our daily operations just on call procedures, and we've done this with Ebola and with the bird flu and different types of things that happen. So we just changed or added some questions in, so they call in and just general medical illnesses. So we'll ask, you know, do you have fever? Have you been in contact with anybody that is sick? And have you traveled anywhere outside of the county lately? You know, initially, it was if you traveled to this list of countries, but now it's everywhere. So it's almost like, where have you traveled? And so any of that information that we get, we're going to relay that to those first responders that are going, so if they need to take preventive measures before they get to the call, they can do that. We know 911 is going to be overwhelmed over the weekend. This thing is growing every day. The minimum of it is growing every day, so we know that 911's going to start getting overwhelmed with calls. So we're asking people if they just want information on the COVID-19, just general questions that they don't call 911 for that. The Mississippi Department of Health has set up a phone number that they're answering those lines from Monday through Friday, eight to five, answering any of those questions. And that number from the Department of Health is 877-978-6453. And there is a website that they have too, that you can go to, and there's tons of information, handouts, and there's a question-answer forum on there that just about any questions that we've heard have been answered on that site. We also want to encourage people to be mindful of when you're getting emails or texts about COVID-19. There's a lot of spam that's going on. There's a lot of viruses that are being put out there. And so, of course, everybody's on notice now, so they're trying to get all the information they can and not really paying attention to that side. Yesterday, I saw a report that it was, I don't know if y'all seen the Johns Hopkins, so they have that, you know, live feed, and you can watch all that. There was a website that copied that. So everybody that went to that site now have trojan orders. So just be mindful of those. Follow trusted websites and sources. So some of the ones that we would encourage people to follow is the World Health Organization, the Center for Disease Control, and the Mississippi Department of Health. The Mississippi Department of Health does have a Mississippi Ready app. If you would like to download that to your smartphone, they're pushing information out through that app. And then another thing, so we always think about the measures of a disaster, the cost measures from the social and the economic impact of that, but we also want to just keep in mind of the emotional sufferings that people face when they go through disasters or emergencies. There is different things that can come out of that, from PTSD to anxiety to depression, and so we don't want to forget about that side. That can be an emergency within itself. There is a crisis text hotline. You can text the word SHARE to 741-741, and you're connected automatically to a crisis counselor. It's free, it's confidential, and it's 24/7. And that's anytime, that's not just for this event. So you can talk to them anytime you need to. So calls related to COVID-19, so we've talked about that. There's an epidemiology, I don't know if I'm saying that right. Hotline number two is 800-556-0003. And then, I didn't know if y'all wanted to talk a little bit about our levels, if we moved to different, I just talked about.
Please do.
So we're at a level four.
Please do.
The level four, so now, is, we're normal day-to-day operations, but we are monitoring, like you said, we set up this virtual situation room. We feel like that was the best thing to do at this point because everybody has tons of meetings. I know everybody's phones have been blowing up lately, as well have ours. So I hope what this will be is everybody can go, any events that they have going on, or we can have a one-stop shop for information for everybody that's going to respond to this event. Once I feel like we get the first case, and I said sporadic cases within Otterville County, we'll move to the level three. We'll have certain people that will come to the E O C, and I guess we'll decide at that point if we're going to keep it a virtual or have actually people man our E O C. A level two would be cluster cases in Otterville County, and then a level one is everybody hands on deck in their E O C, and that would be a significant community cases throughout Otterville County.
Okay, so from that, I'm drawing that we don't have a reported case yet.
No, not at the moment.
So we're at level four, and it will be that that kicks us to level three and then up as needed.
Just a second.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Okay, no, I was going to say, any questions to Ms. Campanella while we have her on deck? Okay, you want to pitch, oh, I'm sorry.
I do have one. One of the things that you mentioned, and you're faster than my brain was absorbing some of that.
I'm sorry, I know.
It is a lot of information. But one thing that I think is really important is that one-shot point where you can find information, or do y'all have that up and running with links to other places, or?
We don't right now, and we're not trying to duplicate anything anybody else is doing.
No.
So the CDC and the Mississippi Department of Health, they have all of that information there. So I don't want, you know, to me, those are two big sites that I feel like everybody needs to go to to get all that information. As far as what Otterville County or City of Starwell is doing, I think once we get that first case, you know, that's really when some of that other start coming into play. We have that virtual room, and that's where all of our response agencies just stay in contact with each other.
Okay.
I guess at that point, once we move to a different level, then we'll decide if we need to create an event. And we've seen, so the city's put, you know, stuff on their website, the school district has things, M S U, the Marine Alert, they have all that. So we're not trying to duplicate anything anybody else is doing.
Okay, and that's made her kind of what I was thinking. Something that the city might do is provide a list of all those links and include any events that we know have changed. For instance, I understand the Pride Parade has rescheduled for the fall, so having a link to show that, other things that are going on. Baseball's been canceled, those kinds of things.
Just till the 30th.
Just till the 30th, this month. So I think having information, and one place that you can go for the information makes it easier for people.
And that's trusted sites, I think.
Right.
Social media is a thing now, it's the best, quickest way to get information out. We have a Twitter.
And misinformation.
And misinformation. We do have a Twitter account. We have a Facebook, but we're in Facebook jail right now, so maybe our Facebook could be unlocked at some point. But, so right now, we just have Twitter. The county does have a website, so we'll be putting some of this on the county's website as well, just especially like these handouts where people can print those off. Our plan today is to get these printed and go around to all of our government buildings and, you know, just in the bathrooms, when they come in the door, like having that visual, oh yeah, this, you know, and so everybody knows that we are trying to do something to prevent it. It's different to me than like a severe weather event. We can't stop that from happening. We can't stop this pollen that's falling today, you know, but we can stop this from spreading, and I think it's going to take all of us to do it.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you. And we will set up, I'll get with IT after this, and make sure that we are linked in multiple ways to as many of those websites and opportunities for us to get information out as possible, so we'll do that. And the partnership has their own constituency of restaurants, et cetera, so they might be a good source to.
I did talk to them personally, too, and so I'm going to email some of these handouts, and I think they're going to shoot them out to their 600 members, yeah.
Okay, great. All right, well, thank you so much.
You're welcome. And I guess I will turn it to Wes, or what's your suggestion?
Well, let me just say a few things. Really just introduce these two. But first, to let the public know, the city know, that the hospital's certainly been very diligent and had many meetings on this topic, but we want to be an informed voice and also a calming voice during this difficult time. I want to commend these guys and really all the hospital staff for their diligence in staying on top of this subject. Of course, it's data changing, so certainly there are a lot of concerns about what's going to happen. As we talked in the car on the way over, Wes says, you know, one of the things that's going to compound the problem is that with the pollen, everybody's going to develop allergy symptoms and think that it's the virus. So we certainly want people to stay on top of their own symptoms. Of course, we're not necessarily encouraging everybody to ask us to come to the E R. What we're trying to do is to keep the E R free and open to treat those that meet the criteria to be admitted or treated through the E R. So we want there to be some common sense there as well. But Wes, among all the many things that he does, he's also the Director of Emergency Services, Emergency Plan, and so he may have a few things he would want to say. And Savannah as well, she does a number of things. She's Director of Quality, Director of Accreditation and Infection Control. So we have a document, I guess, send it to you if you want. I'm passing that out. It's a frequently asked questions document that we have prepared, and so if you guys might want to look at that, it may lead to some other questions that you might have of us. It's on our website, it's on Facebook, and so we're trying to keep things posted currently out there as well to provide information to the public. So I'll turn over these guys, they may have some things they want to add, and then at the end, you know, you guys may have some additional questions, so.
Thanks, Chris.
Wes, why don't you go first?
So Wes Andrews, I'm the Emergency Preparedness Coordinator for the hospital. So for clarity, if you've got a question about the plan for the hospital, stand-up, those kind of things, I can sort of speak to a lot of those. Ms. Brown can speak to, if you've got disease-specific issues or how staffing or preparing self-hygiene, those things, she can respond to much of those. Okay? So, you know, we start today by thinking that if you want to see the Lord smile, just tell them what your plans are. And to let you know that, we've had pandemic plans in place since way before 2007. We've adopted them through the years as different sequences have evolved, whether it be H1N1, MERS, H5N1, SARS, Zika, we've adopted our plans accordingly. So this year, we're moving up to COVID-19 platform. Now, what that means for us is that there are two aspects of our planning contingencies we need to consider. The first one, and the first one is the risk of fear, okay? What are you afraid of? Are you afraid you're going to come in contact with it? Are you afraid that if you come in contact with it, it's going to result in a hospitalization? Those are two different issues and aspects of the planning process. The first one, I cannot control the amount of fear in the community, no plan can, okay? What we can speak to, though, is that what's the risk of people being exposed to this? Now, a lot of actions have taken place in our community and in our state to reduce the possibility of exposure. So to speak to that, we'd probably need an epidemiologist here, and Safe Department of Health has that available for us. But basically, the steps that we're taking to reduce the spread and the exposure, okay, are good. Our plan within the hospital is we now, you know, more stringent hand washing, use of masks, maybe some spatial isolation. If you come in and there's a respiratory issue going on, we're going to move you to this side of the waiting room, as compared to if you're coming in with a stomach or something like that, we'll move you to the other side. You'll start to see a little bit of that take place within our plan. Within our plan, we have literally five stages, and those five stages are designed based not just on the fear module, but now on what happens if you do have an exposure that could result in hospitalization. So as you will see, we have the first three phases. First phase is we're sort of monitoring, everything's just sort of calm and copacetic, everything's great. Level two is, okay, we've heard a rumor or something, World Health Organization has stood up and they're approaching some things. Level three is when, okay, a pandemic has been declared. Now, we start having more definitive meetings to address specifically what kind of issues this plan needs to move forward into. Then we roll into level four for us at the hospital. Now, level four for us at the hospital basically means that we've had three confirmed cases within our state and one within our seven-county service area. That's when things become a little more limiting, if you will, as far as limiting visitors and limiting certain procedures, things like that take place. We heighten our processes up in the emergency department, what we're looking for, who gets screened and how they get screened. All of that enhances a little more. Level five is the highest level that we can go at the hospital, and that level will be you have 10 in the state or three in our seven-county service area. At that point, the first risk of exposure, probably everybody's being exposed at that point, okay? We would have no way to ask, where have you been lately? Because it's not going to really matter. So what we need to understand is that if you're exposed, it doesn't mean that you're going to get sick enough to need hospitalization. So with all the advance, all the efforts that we're putting out there about reducing or limiting your exposure, understand if you get exposed, it's not an automatic admission to the hospital. Many of these patients who are exposed can be handled and treated at home on self-quarantine. What does that mean? They take the simple precautions that anybody else would if you have the flu, okay? You want to stay hydrated, you want to watch your fever, you want to watch those kind of things. Somebody will be checking on you, they'll follow up with you or follow up with your personal care provider if you think your symptoms are getting worse. Once those triggers are pulled or those steps are happened, then we look at, calling back up with the hospital, do you need to come in and do you need to be evaluated at that point? But understand, as far as a system-wide process for testing anybody on demand with the absence of any symptoms, it's just not there right now, okay? Just like what we talked about. You're in pollen season now. Yesterday, I parked my truck outside, come out, and when I got off work, it was covered with stuff. What does pollen and allergies present? If you've had them, sniffles, cough, okay? Some people with severe allergies, little aches, little pains. So you can imagine, even though we have all these efforts in place to reduce the spread of COVID-19, here in the South, we're also facing the issue of now, I feel like I have all of these symptoms, let's go to the hospital, okay? So the first thing we're going to ask is, where have you been? Who you been around? Have you been around anybody who has it? Do you know that? Okay? If not, let's treat your symptoms. Let's, don't jump off and just assume that everybody has COVID-19 just because now we're in allergy season and they're presenting with sniffles, okay? So that's the big message we want to get out there, to know that the hospital has a plan. We will escalate the plan, we will notify Kristin and the different entities as we begin to move forward. We have signage that'll be posted throughout the hospital, and we'll stay on Facebook as far as social media awareness, to let you guys know when we move to that level four or to level five. We are not at level four yet, we're at level three, okay? So we do have this case down in Hattiesburg, we don't have one in our service region that we are aware of as of this moment in time, okay? Any other questions about our plan you might have? Yes?
I don't know about a plan, I just have a question. In your frequently asked questions, it's, you're sending the test down to Jackson, what's the turnaround time on that?
If it's okay, I'll step in on that one. I'm Savannah, they've introduced me. I'm the Quality Director. I work closely with the Infection Control Nurse Manager and Infection Control Officer, which is Donell Livingston. I am a certified infection control nurse, so some things I can try to help with. I will tell you, we're getting kind of two different pictures on that. The thought is that if it's a positive, we will hear back relatively quickly. Our major contact with the health department is Lisa Tedford. We deal with her on a daily basis. I just got off the phone with her before I came here. If we think it's a positive, most likely we'll hear back within a day, but there are some resources from the health department lab that are telling us it's going to be more like two to three days. We do want you to know that if our state department of health lab tests positive, that's what we call a presumptive positive. It's not confirmed, but we will treat it as if it is a confirmed positive. It goes to the CDC for confirmation, and at that point, we would then know if we have confirmed positives. Like you said, as of this time, we have no diagnosed COVID-19 patients. That does not mean we have not been doing some testing, and so this, all of this may change as the days go by. We don't want anyone to panic, and we know that that's kind of the nature of this, but we also don't want people to take it flippantly. I will tell you, just because I know everybody gets scared about the mortality rate, we keep hearing about that. And right now, based on the statistical data that we have, we do see a mortality rate of COVID-19 of a little over three, by some estimates between 3.4 and 3.7 percent, and that is higher than the flu. But I want to preface that with, we are almost positive that that denominator, so what they're basing that data on, is tulip. Because most of us, if we were to get COVID-19, would have symptoms of the cold, something like a cough, we might have a fever, and if you're like me, I don't go to the doctor for a cold, right? And so you're not going to have me in your denominator. And there are a lot of patients like that that present mildly, and we don't have data with them. What we have seen is in countries like South Korea, they have been very vigilant with their testing, they have that capability, and they have tested the majority of anyone who has a symptom. And the mortality rate that is showing out of South Korea is looking like more, closer to 0.7 percent, which is way more consistent with flu. I say that to help us kind of take a deep breath. If we get this, if it does come to our area, which we suspect that it will, most likely by the end of the month, we will start to see patients, especially with the travel and the people that are returning. We expect that, the experts are expecting that. We don't expect overall in the population to see a huge mortality rate. We don't. But again, we don't want people to take it flippantly. Our young and healthy population, for the most part, will most likely demonstrate with something like a cold, maybe the flu. They will have fever, they will possibly have colds, like coughing symptoms. Most of the time, it's not going to be sneezing and sniffles, I will say that. So if you just have a runny nose from this pollen, that is very unlikely to be COVID-19. The symptoms of this are a little more typical to be lower respiratory, if that helps at all. But what I will tell you, why we do want to take it very seriously, in our older population, so when we look at the rates with people who are 65 years of age and older, particularly those over 80, we see a higher mortality rate. When we get, if we start to say all of 65 and above or maybe 70 and above, it's closer to about a 10 percent, and the older we get, that higher the rate gets. Now, that is significantly higher than a flu mortality rate for that age group. Because of that, yes, we need to take it seriously, meaning if the health department advises that we stop having large group events, we probably need to really look at that. I think right now, they have advised that we look into canceling anything with 250 people or more. We really need to focus on what we bring home and what we bring to the people around us. So even though my household may be just fine if we get COVID-19, it's possible that my children's grandparents might get very ill with it. So yes, please, clean your hands, cover your cough appropriately. Please don't go out and buy every mask that's on the market. I'm begging you on that one. There is a shortage of masks, and that is something that you're probably hearing about.
Does the mask provide any protection?
I mean, I've heard of.
A limited amount of protection. It depends on how you wear it. If you are not wearing it appropriately, it's not going to protect you. If you're constantly touching your face because the mask is on your face, which as soon as we start talking about that, we all want to touch our faces, right? But having that mask on can cause issues. If you are taking it on and off incorrectly, you could actually increase your exposure because you may have secretions or some sort of droplet on the mask. And that's not something that we want. But for healthcare providers who are actively taking care of patients who are coughing in, you know, towards them or in their area, they need mask protection. You will see different kinds of masks used in hospitals. But if you were to come in with symptoms, we would place a mask on you. But in general, we would ask that the public try not to buy all the masks. We are having a little trouble getting ahold of them. We do have a current supply that we think will be fine through this time. But it is limited. We do ask for that help. Do you all have any specific questions for me?
I do. I'm going to be the question.
No, I appreciate it.
I know that we are all washing our hands like mad. I'm making my best efforts not to touch my face. I'm trying to be mindful of how far I am from anybody, that sort of thing. Let's say I do develop that cough and a low-grade fever. Clearly, my first option is not the emergency room.
I would prefer it not be, yes.
So what should I do?
Call your doctor.
Don't even go to my doctor.
Call the doctor, get their opinion on it. Because right now, although there are external private laboratories that have the capability of doing this test, a lot of us don't have those kits from those labs yet. A lot of clinics don't. So I can't tell you that every clinic is going to have that available for you if you call today. They may advise you to something different. But it's a good idea to call, find out if they would even be able to test you if you came in or if they felt like you at that time needed to go to the hospital. We don't, we will not test people at this point in time if they come in with no symptoms. So if you come in and you were entirely asymptomatic, but you think you were exposed, we will not be using one of our tests on you. We will only test those with symptoms who meet certain criteria.
So even in that situation?
We might test you.
Well, I was going to say, try to limit our face-to-face.
Yes, ma'am, absolutely. It's really these very basic things, but we sometimes let them lapse. I mean, I do too. I mean, how many of our mothers taught us when we sneezed and when we coughed to use our hands, right? Mine did, you know? And so the idea that we need to cough and see the crook of our arm, that is helpful, trying to do that. Try not to touch your eyes and your hair. I've touched mine in this meeting, right? So I mean, there are things that we need to be careful about. If we use a tissue, not to reuse it, I would not be a man carrying around a hanky right now, just to be truthful with you. So those are things that we just have to be cautious with. And if you do have those symptoms, we do challenge you, please don't go out in public. Don't go to church if you have a cough or a fever. Please don't send your kids to school. Because even though they may not get very ill with it, they could take it home.
So.
Is there any idea, do they have any knowledge right now? You know, say summertime's coming, the heat, the continued heat, like usually kills off the flu. Is that something this will die off with?
We just don't know yet, just to be truthful with you. Coronavirus is not new. COVID-19 is. Coronavirus is actually a family of viruses. There is one strain that is one of the main players with the cold, the common cold. So we don't see a lot of common cold in the summer. So I would like to believe that it will go away. But I have not seen any reports from the CDC or any research that is showing that it will just go away yet. They do believe, my understanding is that China has peaked. So typically, when something starts to become person-to-person transmission, it gets way bad. Not very professional there, sorry. But it gets a lot worse, and then we start to see a steep drop. So we're hoping for that.
But China did, what's the term draconian type measure? They just sealed off old cities that you probably wouldn't, couldn't do in the United States. I mean, this type of government system. What makes this other than higher mortality rate for people over 80? What makes this different from other strain, other type strains of flu and things that we've seen in the past? Is the fact it's so infectious and it's spreading? Is it spread faster? What's the thing that this?
Well, I'm not an epidemiologist. And so some of those questions might be better for Dr. Byers or Dr. Dobbs in the state of Mississippi. But I will tell you, it's a new strain of this virus. And anytime we have what we call a novel virus, or in the past, we've usually, it's been a novel influenza, but this is not a form of the flu. But anytime we have a novel virus, we may not necessarily have the ability to fight that off super well yet. This is how this kind of happens. But again, right now, even though that mortality rate sounds very concerning, it is not as high as a lot of other pandemics that we've seen in the past. So I don't want it to be something that people panic about, although I know we can't always help that.
And if I could just sort of shoehorn into that. Most of the mortals that we're seeing in a greater than 65 population, there's these comorbid conditions that are already preexisting. They've already got long-term lung illness or other things.
Diabetes, kidney issues.
So particularly in that. Now, if you take the strata of a 65 and older population, now let's narrow it down just to those people who are prone to these chronic illnesses, okay? So now, you start looking at a mitigation process where you want to protect those that you hold the most dear, okay? So you see how now we start to transition from a risk of exposure to a risk of, okay, if you're exposed, let's try to protect this portion of our population. And that's where a lot of things begin to move towards. The CDC did present a process here. The concern about the hot weather and what happens there is that typically drop in spread doesn't go as far. So they're thinking it might actually have a contributor to it. Not that the virus dies down or goes away, but its ability to spread and replicate itself becomes a little diminished. So hey, good thing we're in the South, right? Because we're going to get hot tomorrow night.
And you're less likely to spend all your time indoors.
That's correct.
I guess as policymakers, we look, you know, going into sports season and things like that. And I was just sitting there. I guess my question is, if you're going to look at 250 threshold on population, does it matter if it's an indoor sport or an outdoor sport? And does that factor into any decision we might make?
I would think that it would. But I'll be honest, I'm going to pass that one on to the health department. I would really like to see with those kinds of decisions that you make them while consulting the Mississippi State Department of Health. My contact is Lisa Tedford. But if you call that hotline, I'm sure they would get you through to someone who could help you more. Truthfully, if it's an outdoor sport, I think you would be less likely to have transmission. But if you're within a few feet of each other, you can still transmit the virus, so.
And again, hopefully, you see that what we're talking about, this risk of exposure versus risk of having hospitalization, okay? So to reduce the risk of exposure, they're trying to keep crowds small. Indoor/outdoor crowds, again, the philosophy of doing that, the risk motivator, is to reduce the opportunity for exposure.
I also want to mention that we also, as we speak, have a team at the State of Health, me and them, Dr. Husker, Eddie Coates, the Mercer Room, and Donell Livingston.
I know there's been a question or some conversation that the United States wasn't geared up, prepared to test at the level some of these other countries have been testing. If we had more test availability to test large amounts of population, would we be encouraging people to get the test? Because wouldn't that mitigate the spreading of it? Even if people walk around and feel okay, but they actually carry this thing?
That would be a better question for the health department. But in truth, I would think so. I mean, if we had the capability to do more testing, of course, I would think the health department, as well as your local healthcare providers, would do that. But right now, we have to prioritize for those who are ill.
Let's you track, if nothing else, where things are.
And the health department does. They are tracking contacts. They monitor very closely people who've been exposed. There is a two-week incubation period, so that's something to know. Or we think there is a two-week incubation.
You contact a lot of people in two weeks if you have this stuff, if you're walking around with them and don't know it and you feel okay.
Well, incubation doesn't necessarily mean that that's when you're contagious. But it's more of how long it may take you to become ill. So say you were exposed two days ago, just because you feel great today, doesn't mean that you won't develop it. But if it's been a significant amount of time, you're most likely out of that danger zone.
All right, if anyone, anyone else, any other question? Pass it to me. What would you like to ask?
May I ask this question? If my information is correct, the county health department will not have the testing abilities. Should we encourage people to continue to go to the health department if it just turns out to be sinus or flus? And is there something in plan stage if the local health department thinks it could be related to this virus to refer them somewhere else?
Yeah, I can't speak for the health department about whether or not they have testing kits available in their local office. But every kit that we currently have at the hospital is from the local health department. Lisa Tedford provides our kits to us.
But that's the state health department?
Well, they're all together.
I got a release yesterday that said do not send people to the county health department testing.
And that's more of a question for them. They may not be performing testing. But we are performing testing based on their guidance at this time. There are private labs that have the capability. But again, we're just waiting on kits, so. But yeah, with the health department, that's a question for them, and I'm sorry, we wouldn't be able to answer that.
But your earlier advice would stand that your first contact is not go to the ER or to your doctor's office or to the county.
Call your private physician.
Work through your symptoms and make a decision.
And absolutely, you know, and if you're ill and you're just not sure what to do, err on the side of caution, absolutely. Come, I mean, our ER is not going to turn you away. We just would ask that people don't come in that are not ill.
All right, thank you. Thank you both, all four, so much for coming and briefing us and letting us have the virtue of your experience and your wisdom in this matter.
I don't want to leave you out with you too.
Okay, that'd be great.
Do you want to send out to whomever? There's just.
Okay, all right. Thank you so much. If there's anything that we, as a city, can do or y'all see that we need to do, please don't hesitate, get in touch. And we'll put out information as much as possible. Thank you.
And I think as individuals, I think anything that we can do that can help those of us who are more vulnerable, please be mindful and thoughtful about that. If you can help an older person with their grocery shopping as opposed to them having to go to the Kroger, that would be useful. So just be good neighbors, be mindful, be prepared.
Thank you. All right, any other discussion about that before we move into the agenda? All right. We have minutes which Mr. Latimer has vetted, I believe. Ms. Harden is taking care of, I think, family wedding again. She is not here.
This is her last one.
It is her last one, yes, all right. So any issues with minutes? Any issues with making them on, putting them on consent? Start there. I don't know of any comments. I don't think I have anyone to introduce, according to NAV. Any comments anyone have listed on the agenda at this point, okay? We have no public appearances scheduled, no public hearings scheduled. The item that is up here is something that actually, Mr. Latimer, I'm going to let you take this just in terms of it's the annexation. We have to adopt, this is not a resolution, but it is, what is it formally called? It's just a facilities?
Yeah, in an annexation case, you have to have a written plan about what you propose to do to the proposed annexation territory. So it lists out all the city departments, all their personnel, all their equipment, and how they plan to use their personnel to staff the territory, their equipment to staff the territory, and what those cost projections are with respect to the territory. So it's a 23-page document that our consultant, Mike Slaughter, put together. And it has to be put before the board for the board's vote up or down for that to be then tendered in court as part of the city's annexation case.
So it'll be an exhibit in court or it's necessary to that?
What is the difference between this and item A in the board business?
Nothing, it's a different.
You weren't there, I'm sorry. We're scratching that one. I just put it under my business since I'm tarred with this brush anyway, so.
But it's something that we have seen before, that we've looked at, and it's just dotting an I, crossing a T sort of thing.
You've seen it before from a raw data standpoint, especially when you're looking at the budget, you know, on a daily or regular basis. But what this does is, you know, in the annexation case, we've produced over 6,000 documents now. And this is a 23-page document that calls everything down. So it's a one-stop-shopping snapshot that's in chart format, map format, bullet point format, which is easily digestible.
It just shouldn't be a huge surprise.
Kind of an executive summary, if you will. Okay? And I am absolutely positive that has no need to go on consent. All right, under board business, we have an advertisement for the proposals for the sports complex field lighting. And since that is the cornerstone park, the tournament facility, we will leave that off of consent as well. But that is something that has been gotten together. Mr. DeQuois has put that together for both the synthetic turf and the field lighting. And so those will be going out for bids separately for each one of those products or elements of the park, so. The resolution next is for the issuing of the bonds. Also for, and this is for the industrial park, this is the Trinity project that, or the fee and lieu agreement that Mr. Higgins brought to us a while back. Yes, sir?
Can I speak to that, Mayor? And this doesn't actually, it says authorizing issuance, but this is not the GO document to sell the bonds. This document closes out the protest period and says that everything was duly published and noticed. Remember for those bonds to issue, there's a two-part trigger. Number one, a project has to be recommended by the link. And number two, it has to be a fee and lieu project, which means a $60 million project. So until that recommendation comes to you and that criteria is met, the bonds won't be spent.
Right, this is just that final.
Closes out the protest period.
Exactly, so. And then we have the advertising for three vacancies. This includes planning and zoning. We had a recent resignation, the Historic Preservation Commission. We have a vacancy due to the death of Dr. Fazio. And then the Library Board of Trustees has a vacancy. So this is authorization to advertise for those. And I would assume that is eligible for consent. Airport is leasing tillable land for the area out at the airport. Consent on that one unless anyone has any issues with that. Planning is a preliminary plat for Clark Grove subdivision. That is a subdivision that is the West Side and Re Road area, I believe. So that's preliminary plat for that area of that affordable housing development. Any issue with, well, let's wait and look at the preliminary plat before we do that, so. And then we have special events, the blue and white special event on that picnic, that Saturday of April 4th, which is the one I said was the next one coming up. Now, the Pride Parade has been postponed. This is the next one coming up that we'll be looking at. And we can certainly improve it and keep that in mind with the organizers as we go along. Same is true of the sarcoidosis walk. It's April 18th. And any of these, we will continue to maintain contact with the organizers and hope that between now and then, things will settle down to the point that it will not jeopardize their event. Because obviously, these are fundraisers for our nonprofits. I mean, they're important for their future and how they conserve their constituency. So anyway, all of those obviously stay off consent as special events. Under engineering, we've got authorizing the advertisement for the herbicide spraying, which is what we do every year.
Yeah, what is the budget? What's the line item on that? Still $7,500 or is it?
I don't know. Cody, do you happen to know what the line item amount is on the spraying for the herbicide? For the?
No, I'd like to find out whether that.
It's 2012, 15.
Yeah.
No, the only reason, we missed it for a couple of years. There's a noticeable difference in the right of ways and when it's something. I know it is the board, I know we will.
We budgeted 10.
10?
Last year, we spent 5. The year before, we spent 1,100, so.
All right, so.
Not on consent.
Not, okay, all right. Then we have, the next item is the declaring of surplus of Ford 150 XL and then authorization to purchase a 3/4 ton crew crab as a replacement vehicle, so. Any issues with that one? Claims docket would be the remainder. And then acceptance of the February financial statements, which is usually an acceptable consent item. Under human resources, we have advertising, I'm sorry, authorization to hire reserve police officers. Any issues with hiring those guys? And then authorization to hire Eli Markstale and Cameron Bell as entry-level police officers. So we're about to get us at full complement, are we not, Chief?
Yes, ma'am.
Excellent, excellent, okay. And then we have an authorization transfer, Noah Brandon, who was working with the engineering department to the Strutway Utilities Department. He's going to get an additional opportunity to expand his knowledge base of city functions. So no issues with any of that, okay? Authorized to advertise for seasonal maintenance workers for parks and rec. Any issues with any of that? Authorized to hire the sports coordinator, Ms. Reeves. She came from Texas too. Gary's got a fellow, yeah, a fellow Texan coming our way. Any issues with hiring Ms. Reeves, all right? Selecting Kronos as a city timekeeping and HR software. Stephanie, do you have anything you want to share with us? I think Chris has vetted the contract, right? You have not vetted?
I have, but there's multiple issues we need to discuss about the contract.
Okay, all right. So do you want to remove it? Because is it that kind of multiple issues?
No, we've exhausted negotiation. So it's just up to the board to vote it up or down.
Ah, okay. Ah, okay.
And NAV asked me to talk about it today.
Okay, please do.
And Lisa, too, in both of their absences.
Okay.
So, board, remember that the city originally went with Tyler Technologies. It's a payroll and time clock software company, and that deal didn't work out as well as NAV and Lisa had hoped. And so, the city got out of that contract. And so, this is the second vendor that they've talked to to try to provide these services, and they both believe these services are extremely beneficial to the city. And they put in the staff report on the cover sheet why and the man-hours that would be saved and the efficiencies that the city would gain. We've been negotiating with Kronos over the last two months, and as you guys know, the Mississippi AG puts forth these various opinions that says that the city is prohibited from entering into contracts that have indemnification provisions in them, disclaimers of otherwise applicable warranties, and limitation of liability. Kronos refused to strike any of those provisions. And so, what we tried is to attach an addendum to the contract. When negotiations usually totally break down, our last step at trying to get a deal done is attaching what we call our standard contract addendum. And what that says is even though all of those provisions are in your contract, we say in the addendum that none of them apply to the city. We sent that addendum to Kronos, and Kronos struck much of our addendum. Just to let you know what Kronos struck, they struck all Mississippi AG citations in the addendum. They struck that Starkville would be constitutionally immune under the 11th Amendment. They struck that Starkville would not be agreeing to waive warranties that would be otherwise applicable under law. They struck that Starkville did not agree to limit Kronos' damages, and they struck that Starkville did not waive any rights or remedies conferred by, by the Uniform Commercial Code, and it struck the fact that they would comply with the Mississippi Employment Protection Act. So, how this plays out with those three things still being in the contract, from a limitation of liability standpoint, if the city had to blowback against Kronos for some liability event, the damages that the city could receive against Kronos would be limited to the value of the contract in the 12 months preceding the liability act. So, whatever the city has paid Kronos in those 12 months, that's all Kronos would be under the, on the hook for under the contract. How indemnification played out is if the city committed some act that caused Kronos to be negligent or have a claim made against them or be sued, the city would be bound to defend and indemnify Kronos in that event. And the risk there is it's somewhat of a blank check because you don't know what their defense costs would be, and you don't know what that ultimate judgment would be. Lastly, the way it would play out is the city, if they didn't disclaim warranties, would get the benefit of all warranties allowed under the Uniform Commercial Code, that the property or the service is fit for a particular purpose and will do what, excuse me, do what it says. All those will be disclaimed. So, I often get the question in these meetings, especially from Alderman Perkins, "Mr. Attorney, would you approve the board or recommend the board approving this contract?" My answer has to be legally no. But there's more to it than that because the contract NAV contends and Lisa contends is going to be a great benefit to the city. So, I would ask you guys to do two things between now and Tuesday. Number one, read this contract because you need to be familiar with the terms in it. And number two, when NAV and Lisa get back, ask them about the benefits of the contract because you guys just have a cost-benefit analysis or a risk-benefit analysis to make. Is the deal good enough to go ahead and approve with these legal risks being in the contract? You'll certainly not hurt my feelings if you approve the contract, but I just got to tell you what those legal risks are.
Okay. So, Kronos is being used by other municipalities in the state of Mississippi?
It is. And they, NAV reached out to the Human Resources Director in Oxford. And so, we pulled the Oxford deal. And the deal that Kronos has given us is the Oxford deal. So, at least that the city could say that it's being treated similarly with another municipality in the state based on what Kronos has struck.
Okay. So, Oxford accepted the deal?
They did.
Okay. Are there any other cities that are being serviced by Kronos?
Not to my knowledge.
It's a really large, national company, though.
Is there another vendor that's out there?
I don't know.
Does something worthy of looking into?
Not really. I'll speak to that. The first choice had been Tyler, which is our general ledger software, and that just failed. It, they could not deliver what, what they had indicated that they would be able to deliver, and it just, it just was not worth pursuing with them. The Kronos thing has been in place in Oxford for some time now, I think, and works, works there. It's, it's a large national firm. Is there any idea, and I thought it saw him.
Alderman Volunt has it up, so.
Coming from the manufacturing side, when I left, when I left NAV to start, we had Kronos. We had a lot of problems at it. I don't know what brought the system because we were coming from the manufacturing side. Had a lot of problem with the payroll of it, and we say employees don't clock in and out by it. We had a lot of problems.
How long ago, I mean, I don't know how many years they had to make it better. When did you, how long ago was that?
Just a couple of years.
Oh, okay. So, it was your most recent, okay. It was your most recent deal. Okay.
I didn't like it. My employees didn't like it.
From my conversation with Oxford, they're not experiencing those kind of problems. And it, like you're saying, it could be a difference in industry segment. It may work better here than it does, than it does there. I suspect there will be some employees who don't like it because it is going to require them to be a little more conscientious about how they, how they account for things. So, that could be, that could be problematic. Is there any way for you to know, have there been a lot of lawsuits related to the kind of things that they're asking us to?
You know, we can, we can research that between now and Tuesday. I don't know that right now as it relates to Kronos on those specific issues that are still on the contract.
Does this shift additional liability exposure to the city that we ordinarily would not incur, or certainly would not occur per the contract that, that, before these amendments or before they start striking things? Does it, does this shift additional liability exposure to us? And how could that potentially affect our carry, our liability? I mean, it had in Oxford, but what do you think on that?
No, I don't think it shifts liability to the city. I think it shifts financial obligation to the city because the city may not be able to recoup as many damages as it would otherwise, or the city may be on the hook for certain payments it wouldn't be on otherwise. But liability, liability would not be an issue.
I would think it'd be good to check the other municipalities in the state, especially larger municipalities. And it can't be just two companies that do this business. And secondary, I've never seen the city really have so many indemnifications scratched, and I've never heard of this. But I wonder why is Kronos selected? I mean, there's got to be other companies that do this.
There, there are, but, but this is one that works well, that can be integrated with our current system. It, it does function well. I'd like to say, in terms of the kind of exposure that you're talking about, we're talking about a payroll system. So, if somebody's paycheck is not right, you find out about it pretty soon quickly as a rule. So, in terms of the ability to be terribly, to have a lot of exposure, you're, you're not likely to have a lot of exposure. The other exposure that you're likely to have is not reporting taxes properly, and there are all sorts of systems that are in place, including the IRS double-checking your calculations. So, the exposure, I think, is probably fairly limited, and it's probably, if there is an exposure, it's probably going to come back to a user error as opposed to a software error.
So, we can read the contract and have conversations with NAV and Lisa between now and Tuesday, and obviously, we're not going on consent, but we can also have those discussions at the board table. So, okay. Anything else?
No, ma'am. Thank you.
Yes, sir. And this next one, this next one is also a little more complex. We need to advertise for Mr. Logan's position. He will be leaving us at the end of this month, and this is the last, this is the last meeting we have at this point before we get to the end of the month. We need to advertise for his position. I sent it out, and I got some feedback from Alderman Sistrunk. NAV put those little tweaks in that she had asked about, had not heard from anyone else. So, what you will have in your packet will be the advertising, suggested advertising position that it was advertised, or that was used when we hired Mr. Logan. So, there should be nothing much different than that. But the second half of this one is, is the part that is something for us to discuss, and that is, we are going to find ourselves with about two weeks to be without anyone because Mr. Polkup is gone, Mr. Logan will be gone, and so, we have no one who has some existing, long-term existing history with City of Starkville Park and Rec.
Mr. Cox? You sent nobody in?
Well, but I mean, in, in.
Administrative.
Yes, in the administrative management type of realm. So, what we do have, and I think we're very fortunate to have, is Mr. DeQuilla, who has managed Gulfport and did so for 20-plus years, is on consulting staff with Neil Schaefer for the park, for the Cornerstone Park. And he has that long-term capability. So, what I am suggesting, and what I think is in our best interest, is for, and he's agreed to, is to serve as a part-time employee, which would be, he's in PERS and he's retired out of it, would be, have him serve no more than 20 hours, but to oversee Park and Rec while, when we, when we lose Mr. Logan, and it gives him a little time to ramp up before Gary leaves us. And then he, he does have a long-term history with a Park and Rec Department of the order of magnitude that we have. So, I didn't have any better ideas than that, and I thought, we'll present that to the board and see how everyone feels about it. Because I don't know that we have an alternative in terms of someone to get out there and do that kind of management, you know, boots-on-the-go-round management.
Do you think he can do what he needs to do in 20 hours?
Well, I, yeah, well, it's going to slop over to a certain extent, but yeah, 20 hours as it relates to that management of the existing facilities and staff, he can meet with them. I'm sure that they can, you know, work with some minimal guidance. They will be able to manage while we're in the process of this, and hopefully, we'll have someone within the next month or two. I would not anticipate this going on much longer than a couple of months. But this is our stopgap measure, and I'm, I'm recommending it as a way for us to handle this in the short term. So, anyway, that's, that's what all that is about. Mr. Logan, you want to add anything to that? You're, you're gone March 30th, right? That's your last day.
Yes, I'll say Chris Latimer on the morning of March 30th related to annexation, and then that's.
And that'll give you some time to, if, if the board chooses, that'll give you some time to give Mr. DeQuilla a little bit of a pass-down?
Correct. He and I have each other's contact information for after that. I don't expect it to be, I expect to continue to have conversation even after that.
Okay. Well, and I know you're creating a sort of a, I used to call it, in the military, we called it a pass-down. You're creating some information for who comes in behind you.
Correct. It's about four pages and continue to grow.
And growing.
List with contact information, et cetera. So, just of all of our running items.
Sure. Okay. All right. I appreciate it. Any comments? Any thoughts from the board?
Just leave it on consent.
Oh, no, I wouldn't go put it on consent at all.
No, I think, I think that's a good stopgap measure. I think he's over the process of becoming involved with the Cornerstone Park. I think he's become fairly engaged and knows about the, the parks, and I think with communication with, with Gary over that timeframe, it'll be a reasonable stopgap measure for sure.
Okay. All right. Well, we will, we will have that conversation again at the board table. So, it's not on consent, but I just want everybody to be up to, kind of up to speed on with the thought process that went with it.
And Mayor, I am very appreciative of Gary staying over that extra.
I know you are.
He's a team player act, and he's doing it on the way out the door, which is awesome.
Absolutely. Well, we, we weren't going to let him take any lead before the 30th anyway. So, all right. And yes, thank you, Gary, for doing that. All right. Next, we have the lowest quote for camera software. Scott, anything you want to add to any of this? This is the.
We're ready to do it. We're ready to go.
Okay. All right. So.
So, what is this? Just a storage backup system?
Uh, this is, yeah, that we need, for the videos that we're getting from our cameras, we're going to need that backup, maintain that storage backup. So, that's, that's what it's about. So, consent for any of that? Okay. We have quotes for, this is the roof area. And we'll be real clear, this is the roof area that is the most impacted. This is over the office and the racquetball courts. There are some leaks over the basketball courts, but Mr. Logan believes that they can be repaired as opposed to replacing the roof area. So, that's what this is.
Have we had the insurance carrier look to see if the storm damaged?
Um, yes, we, did we not do that? I thought we did.
We have, and there's not, that's not the cause. It's, it's other issues that during the installation process of that roof. And the replacement cost of the gym area is significantly higher than, than this. So, but we're hoping we can, and believe we can get by with repair work on that as needed. But these areas over our office and racquetball are beyond repaired. They just simply have to be. It's, and we've had discussions related to everything going on currently. Budget, this is an emergency item for us, and we just, we really don't have much choice but to move forward with this.
That may be something, looking forward, that we need to budget some money towards.
Oh, absolutely.
Because it's been a problem that I've been calling for several years. It's obstructed.
We shouldn't, we shouldn't have to be. This is much sooner, and there's various issues because of that, related to that. But yeah, this is much sooner than it should have had to be replaced, but we're, we can't worry about that now. We've just got to get.
So, is there a clause in this contract related to performance evaluation of the roof?
Yeah.
Haven't seen the contract. Oh.
There's not one with this board agenda item, but I'll, I'll follow up with them just to make sure that it was, I guess, the quote provided. There was no contract.
Okay. Well, touch base with them and see what kind of agreements associated with that and get it to Mr. Latimer. Okay. All right.
Many buckets in the court.
I'm sorry.
Many buckets on the court.
Yep. Yep. All right. Consideration agreement with security solutions for the alarm system. This is just simply the monitoring, annual monitoring agreement? Okay. Any issues with that one? Agreement with Perry Weather for weather station use at the sportsplex, and this is just during baseball games, outdoor soccer as well?
Anything outdoor at the sportsplex and the key park. This will allow our staff to have a software system to basically better monitor the weather. Right now, any staff that are out there, our umpires, whoever's out there, they're just using their own personal phone. This will give us a, a better system, ultimately makes the public and our spectators safer.
Okay. Have you looked at this agreement?
It's a pre-system.
Yeah. Right. I just wanted to get confirmation from Mr. Latimer.
Yep.
Okay. All right. Any issues there?
No, ma'am.
All right. Thank you. All right. Under the police department, we have some training management software. Chief, anything you wish to add to any of that? This, is this the handout that we've got in front of us here?
Yes, ma'am. That's just a handout. I heard with our overhead meeting, we had some questions, what exactly is Power DMS? And it's a centralized system of software that I think is going to save us money, especially in regards to training, instead of having to do classroom training, PowerPoint allows supervisors to push out individual training for each individual of what their specific needs are, test, monitoring, as well as a whole gamut of other, other items.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Any, any questions on that, we all? No? Okay. Consent for that? Okay. We have two travels, one for Corporal Woods to attend Tactical Officer Survival School. And one of the things, Chief, that this is, of course, a kind of a de minimis cost, is $480. But we do want to look at travel as we're moving into this and our budgetary issues. So, you, you feel these are, are significant and important travel matters? Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. We still have to maintain our ability for medium-minimum standards of our personnel to handle firearms. This instructor will allow us to do that. And we did put out an order. All additional training has been shut down, our basics of firearms, less lethal, all of those components, that we're still going to have to maintain those standards under there.
Sure. Okay. All right. Thank you, sir. Anything on either one of these? Both of them are travel for training. Any issues there? Consent for those two. And then we have a purchase of forensic measuring, et cetera, et cetera, device, and this is a JAG Hot Spot brand. So, any issues with that? All righty. Under utilities, we have a professional services agreement for, okay, Terry, you want to, where are you? There you are. You want to give us a little briefing on this one for communication services? This is for the telephone system, is that correct?
No, this is for NAV.
Oh, we have telephone system.
Nav to you. Chief, here, that is one that we provide NAV on this first one. And especially the agreement is professional services.
Why do I keep doing that? You're right. It is. Yeah. It's a, it's a communication.
It's a communication. It can help us do a better job and work in a social way than our customers on service in total.
Okay. I apologize. For some reason, I keep defaulting to this to be that telephone system that you're going to upgrade. But, yeah, this is, this is a social, this is attempting to get the information out on social media platform, communication with the, like, for when we did Pleasant Acres and when we're going to do Green Oaks and all the things that we're doing to try to get that information out to people in a, in a thorough and timely fashion. So.
Efficiency options placed, ways that they can do that if they're concerned and better utilize that as such another option, we'd be able to make them aware.
Okay. Right. Okay. Thank you. Any issues with that one? Okay. Accepting the best and lowest quote for the, there's the phone system. I know it's around there somewhere. Thank you. For the, for the phone system, which is not inexpensive, but gear up, guys, because we're going to need to do one for City Hall next year. So, anyway, there, the phone systems have a, have a five-year life, just like computers or so, and, and so that's what this is. So, any, any issues there? Okay. Then Mr. Forrester to travel, Terry is monitoring that one. He says he's going to leave it on for right now, but we'll reevaluate. So, we can.
Terry, that may be something you need to, it may cost a little more money on a plane ticket to get a refundable or transferable instead of just the cheapest because should it be canceled, we'll just eat that. You know, that may be something to consider.
I was suggesting you drive because Kansas City isn't that far away. Keep you out of that cylinder.
Ten hours.
We talked about that, and there's a special link that's right in the middle of the year that I didn't.
And this is a scratch, we scratched that last item off. So, all right. And that, that closes us out. Anything else we want to discuss while we're here? Anybody have any further thoughts on, on anything associated with the virus or anything that we heard today?
Yeah, I missed that first. What have y'all, anything athletic?
Well, we can, we can talk about that because we have, we know that the soccer has canceled until April 1st, and Gary. has canceled until April the 1st. And Gary was looking at monitoring the outlaw center for activities there. Since school is going back in session, we're not going to be having the kids, the, the high school, the younger kids are going to be at school. So it's not as if it'll be packing the gym to do anything. So kind of monitoring that with the social distancing concept, leaving it open, but being aware that we don't want to have massive gatherings.
Is public school going to mirror State University?
No, they're, they're going back Monday. They're going back Monday. But I think what they're doing is waiting on guidance from the state. The, the school, the high schools, yeah, school, the public school system is going back Monday. I assume that means the academy is going back Monday. And I don't have any contacts with, I can talk to Jeremy. So, as far as I know, but yes, we're monitoring it. And I've had conversations with department heads about making sure the supervisors in there are looking for people who might be trying to come to work and, you know, not feeling well. So we make sure that we're not passing it along. I know everybody wants to work, you know, where, wherever they can and hate not to come to work. But we need to be kept cautious of the, of the wider picture. And also looking at our financials. Well, I think, oh, yeah, we've got a good sick leave package. But, and also looking at financials, at how we can save funds where possible.
I was just sitting there thinking, you know, the way, the way City Hall is laid out, it couldn't get, if you ever got to that point, you know, you can receive tickets. And then also, the electric department's got to drive through, kind of like most restaurants are probably going to go for a while, make curbside. But we've got, the way City Hall is, you can pretty much lock this building down, except for the front office and being able to take tickets and pay tickets and things like that. And then you also said, I missed, somebody said maybe the court system won't be in.
They're not going to, they're not going to meet for a week, and we're going to monitor. Judge Kelly is going to look at that. We've, we have postponed the docket until the next week. And then we're going to relook at that. Justice Court has shut down, I think, until the middle of April, April 14th of April, I believe it is. So I'm not quite sure, that seems a little extended to me. But, you know, that's just, that's their choice, certainly. But we're, Judge Kelly's going to look at it on a, through this next week and see if we need to push that docket again. We can do that. But we're hoping things will settle down, obviously, and we can kind of go back to, it's normal. But with, with caution, of course.
Probably a portion of Judge Kelly's decision process involve the number of students who will be out of town next week.
Right, right. So with the school, with, with classes being out at MSU, those are frequently focused on the docket. So, all right. So thank you, everyone. We appreciate it, Mayor. We're out.